The regular meeting in Lake Forest School District 67, Board of Education for May 21st, 2019. May I have a roll call, please? Eileen.
Mr. Engeland.
Here.
Ms. Laverne?
Here.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Fulker?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Mrs. Levert?
Here.
Mr. Borkowski?
Here.
Mr. Chun?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, we welcome Justin Engeland and Rich Chun to our board as this is their first regular board meeting. We're excited to have you both joining us. As I've said many times over the years, I believe one of the most important jobs that this board has is to continue to push our districts towards -- to continue to push our district towards achieving the vision that we set five years ago. As we welcome new board members and as the end of our school year quickly approaches, I'd like to take a few minutes to quickly review our vision and mention a few ways we are seeing progress towards achieving it. As we see on the screen, our District 67 Vision Statement begins with our core values. I won't read the entire slide, but I'll mention a few highlighted words that jump out at me. Every child, incredible capacity to learn, maximizing each student's growth, actively engaged students, and world-class educators. Moving on to the vision statement itself, again, a few words that jump out to me. Innovative learning community, cultivating their minds, discovering their passions. And finally, our milestones. These are the tangible things that we want to see accomplished so that we know we're on the right track. Looking at the first three milestones, we continue to make good progress. Having revamped both the math and the LA Curricula over the past few years, we continue to push forward. Other tangible markers of progress that we saw this particular year included: All students are now creating personalized digital portfolios; we've implemented effective co-teaching partnerships at all grade levels for which they are needed; created handbooks for those partnerships; and adopted a walkthrough tool to measure its effectiveness. And we've ensured that 100% of our teachers have been trained in CHAMPs, which is a program to ensure our schools and students are safe, civil, and supportive, and that's directly in support of our effort to grow socially and emotionally, as well as academically. In the area of talent, we continue to strive to hire the best talent. Internally, we continue to push to develop the talent that we have. To that end, our staff has developed and provided meaningful differentiated personalized job-embedded professional development for all staff. The current percentage of our staff who state that their professional development is meaningful to their development is 95%. There is more? Well, we'll forget about that for the moment. The next milestone that you don't see is partnership. And in the area of partnership, Thought Exchange and Key Communicators are two new strategies to access our parents and our community and provide them with open access to and information from the district. And finally, environment is perhaps the most visible of the milestones, and we continue to push forward in this area as well, as we do have aging buildings. Having completed the Haskins renovation last year, this summer, we will be making our schools more accessible by creating or changing a number of ramps and lifts across the district. Many classrooms will be getting new doors; other classrooms will be having outdated and problematic barriers removed, replacing them with modern cubicles. We're also in the midst of investigating the possible transformation of our science labs. In the area of technology, we implemented Schoology as a learning management system for all grades 5 through 8. Our vision is purposely aspirational, and some say we will never actually reach it. I'm not sure that I agree with that, but I do know two things. While we are not there yet, we continue to make real progress towards achieving it. We are on a good trajectory. A few years ago, this board defined our own core values. One of them was that we want to be a vision-centric board, which means we continuously ask if the activities our district are doing are moving us closer to achieving our district's vision. I look forward to continuing to move closer and closer to our vision in the coming months and year. That concludes the president's report. We now move to the superintendent's report. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski, and one of the things I can add to that for Richard and Justin is that as we review the mission, the vision, and the milestones, one of the things that I'm struck by over and over again is the foresight that we collectively had and the ownership that the board showed over every aspect of this, and then also the persistence with which the board continues to press us each time we meet, and how do we move towards the vision more quickly, as we just heard just a few minutes ago. And it's really good stuff, and we are making progress across the board on that, and that's one of the things I wanted to speak to in the superintendent's report. One of the aspects on the first milestone was a desire to be nationally recognized, and we have a piece of national recognition that I wanted to share with the board today. So District 67 has been honored with the Best Communities for Music Education designation from the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation for its outstanding commitment to music education. In 2017 and 18, Deer Path Middle School received the Support Music Merit Award, a single-school designation, but this is the first year that the entire district, all five buildings, received the designation of being a part of the 2019 Best Communities for Music Education. Now, in its 20th year, the Best Communities for Music Education designation is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement and efforts to provide music access and education to all students. Research into music education continues to demonstrate educational cognitive and social skill benefits for children who are involved in music. And this is the time of year when we begin to -- we cycle through the end-of-year concerts, and just last week, it was last week, was the band concert. And one of the best moments of my year is when the grades 5 through 8 come out onstage and the 5th graders play, and I always think of "The Music Man," the musical "The Music Man," where everybody blows on a horn and it sounds god-awful, and one of the dads stands up and says, "That's my boy." And you see that in the 5th graders, and the 6th graders come out, and then head snap. It's like, wow, holy smokes, what a difference. And that cycles all the way through each grade level, and that's one of the beauties of working in school, is you get to see kids year after year and how they progress. So you have very passionate teachers, and in each of those concerts, it's really evident. And this is a wonderful reward or wonderful honor for our music teachers to receive, so I want to share that with the group. Thank you.
Questions or comments for the superintendent? Thanks, Mike. We now move to public participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we move on to reports. CSCI, Ingrid and Emily.
And as Ingrid comes up to speak, I wanted to point out for the board and the community that this may well be the last time that Dr. Weimer has an opportunity to present to us. So this is Dr. Weimer's last year, and after many years of conscientious and caring service to our kids and our families, I wanted to say thank you very publicly and express our appreciation for your hard work as the principal of Everett, very successfully there, and then also your transition to central office here, and your work on the CSCI inventory and other things. So, thank you, Dr. Weimer.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. The Comprehensive School Climate Inventory, this is a measure that is published by the National School Climate Center, and we administer it every year. This is our fifth consecutive year of administering this tool. We administer it annually to students in grades 3 through 8 and staff annually, and then the parent population is surveyed every other year. So this is our off-year for parents, so we don't have any data from this year for that. I'll just give a very brief summary. One of our goals this year was to boost our participation rates by population, and so we feel like our concerted efforts paid off. We were looking for participation rates of 90% and above, so we're really pleased to see that we captured that this year with students and staff. And so we feel like it's an ample, robust enough sample that we can really derive some trend data and glean the perceptions of our stakeholders. And then, CSCI publishes some national norms, and so you can see how our students this past year compared to the national norms. We're, you know, of course, very pleased to see that our students, their ratings of different dimensions across the questions, that our students are reporting a better school experience, but we do know that we still have some areas to grow, and so there's a lot of initiatives that are happening simultaneously in the school district to help boost these efforts. And so, the questions center on 13 dimensions that have to do with school climate. They're factors that contribute positively to learning environments, so they're all centered around setting a tone for learning. And the students have 11 dimensions, and teachers have two additional ones, which are professional relationships and leadership. This is a three-year comparison of our student data. And just to remind people, if they hadn't read in the packet, 2. -- below 2.5 is a negative perception, and between 2.5 and 3.5 is neutral, and then 3.5 to 5 is a positive perception. And it goes from strongly disagree, agree, neutral, and so on. With the student comparison, we had 10 of our 11 dimensions were in the positive range, no dimensions in the negative range, and one in the neutral range, the one sense of social-emotional security, which is the one that we're really targeting all of our efforts toward right now. That one, although it is lower than the 3.5 and above that we're trying to get, we have experienced a slight increase over the last three consecutive years. So we're glad with the trend. We want to try to accelerate that trend, but we're happy to see that for the last three years, we are -- our students are reporting a positive, more positive experience in that With our staff, 12 of the 13 dimensions increased over last year. One of the 13 was the same as the previous year, and 12 out of 13 are in the positive range. One out of 13 is in the neutral range, and just like with students, no reports in the negative range for that. And I -- there are a number of initiatives that are happening in our district. You've probably heard about our social-emotional learning initiatives. We've been -- just -- we have a very robust committee that's happening, and we've had a lot of our teachers participating in our social-emotional learning standards, and I would recommend that because school climate and culture really goes across, it's pervasive across our schools, across our curriculum, across our disciplines, and touches everyone, that at some point, the board might be interested in more of a board workshop that involves Renee Fitzsimmons and our principals and Rebecca Jenkins and Kate Kavanaugh, because there's a lot of exciting things that are happening. And it'd be great to dive deeply into what are some measures that we're doing that could really drive these positive experiences for our students, staff, and parents. Are there any questions?
First, I just want to, on behalf of the board, again, repeat what Mike said. Thank you for all of your service for District 67 all these years. Questions or comments for Ingrid?
Yeah, I have a question, Ingrid. Do the kids at all grade levels answer the same questions? So does a 3rd grader answer the same question as an 8th grader?
They do. With the younger grades, we have the teachers read the questions just to make sure that students fully understand what the question's asking in terms of readability, but they are the same questions?
Ingrid, I had two questions for you regarding the staff. I like that the staff -- I love that the students' participation moved from 80% to 92. That's a, you know, a nice big jump and something we talked about last year. The staff moved from 89% to 93% participation. I'm just curious, why is the staff not 100%?
You know, that's a good question, and one of the reasons why it will be hard to ever get to 100% is because we have teachers that share buildings. So if you have, for example, a Spanish teacher in two or three buildings, they, right now, unless that changes, they're not required to fill out all three. It does take quite a bit of time. It's at least, it's about a half an hour.
Of three what?
Schools. So these results are school-based. The one that you're looking at is the district report. So we give -- we say to teachers that are shared amongst buildings, it is a requirement that you fill out the CSCI. However, if you work in multiple buildings, you can choose to fill out. We're going to open it up for you. We're going to count your number as a possible participant in that school.
So part of the 7% that didn't fill it out are people who did fill it out that are being double-counted or triple-counted?
Some of them are. I mean, I think because it's an anonymous survey, you may have a handful of people that don't want to fill it out for whatever reason, even though we go to great lengths to assure them that unless we have a certain sample size, there -- it's not going to be disaggregated where you could drill down to the specific person.
We tell them it's a requirement to fill it out?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yes, we do.
And my other question was, you mentioned the sense of social-emotional concern, and you mentioned the students went up barely. I'm not sure if it's statistically different, but at least it went up, not down, which I appreciate. I was surprised by the staff's response, looking at the past three years. Three years ago, it actually was the highest, about 3.5. Then last -- then two years ago, it went down to 3. It came -- it rebounded from the low. It actually still is lower than it was in the first year of data up there. I'm looking at a different.
Sense of social-emotional security?
Yeah, I'm looking.
So it was in 1617, it was 3.5, and then 3.1, and then 3.43.
Right, and so I just was a little surprised that, given all the initiatives that we've done, the -- I guess I would have expected the staff to be higher than when we started, and they're a little bit lower, if you want to call it even fine. I just was a little surprised by that and wondering if you had any thoughts on that.
Not -- it's really hard to explain why that might be. I know that as we educate teachers more on what are positive factors that research shows help increase students having a positive experience in school. I think as they become more aware of that, we've also, last year, we did a, like, an audit of the program of all the areas that we were strong in and areas that we fell short in, and so there were a lot of building goals that were derived to help shore up any areas where we wanted to boost it. So I don't know if increasing attention to the matter and the gap analysis may have played in. I don't know, but, I mean, it certainly, as we all become more educated in what we need to do and best practices, hopefully, that's going to be increased greatly by next year. There's a lot of professional development that's happening, and when this is taken in the winter, only half of those teachers were able to participate in those, but we've highlighted them in institute days, and so hopefully, next year, it'll be different. The last thing about participation rates, we also, there's a gap between when we submit the numbers of possible participants per school and when they take it. So sometimes, if people are out on an unexplained medical leave, then, or if somehow they're not at school, that there's no, there's no way to just call them that morning and say, "We have, you know, a couple people out on leave that wasn't anticipated," so those have to be in there.
I have a quick question. On the 11 dimensions, or however, I think it's 11, that are the same for students and staff, are the staff rating that, those things, on behalf of the students, on what their perception is of the students, or are they, is it for themselves? That's, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I actually have.
Clearly, the last two are about their own experience, but do they rate, are they answering questions that are about their perception of the student's sense of social well-being, or?
Great question. What I think would help probably illustrate that is if I looked at a section like Support for Learning and read you the question, like, a couple of questions from each of the populations.
Do you have them for this sense of social, this one that we have been focused on?
Yeah, I do.
And social media, too. I mean, both of those are low.
But yeah, so my question is, are they?
I agree.
Are they, are they being asked for their perception of how the kids are experiencing that, or?
So here's sense of social-emotional security. So here's an example from the students' questions. "I have been insulted, teased, harassed, or otherwise verbally abused more than once in my school." And then another question, "Students at my school will try to stop students from insulting or making fun of others." And then the teacher part.
The teacher question, yeah.
Is, "It is common for students to tease or insult one another, and students at the school will try to stop students from insulting or making fun of others."
So it is really their perception of the student experience that they're reporting on for those dimensions?
Yes, and there's a lot of questions that are verbatim, like, for example, "Both populations answer the same question of, 'Very few students in my school make fun of other students.'" So there's quite a lot, like, "There are groups of students in my school who exclude others and make them feel bad for not being part of a group." Those are verbatim for both populations. So it either just has a slight twist on it, and there's, like, "Teachers support students in the school," like, that could be the same for both populations, but, good question.
Right, so the staff one, most of the dimensions are not the staff experience, but their perception of the student experience?
Exactly.
Against the student's own reported perception of their experience?
It's, exactly. It's the teacher's perception of the student experience and what they witness with students and teachers. And then, the staff, of course, has the leadership and professional relationships, which are just their own.
Any other questions for Ingrid?
Anything else?
Thank you, Ingrid.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
We now move to board committee reports.
One quick question.
Yeah.
So, is this our KPI? Is this, is the CSCI what's going to be on the dashboard?
I'm sorry. Say it again.
What's our KPI related? We've discussed, and did we vote on seven, was it, KPIs that are going to be on a dashboard at some point? Is some number from this what's the KPI?
It's one of the things that, I'm not sure which meeting it was, it was a recent meeting, and there's a question about whether or not we were going to use this, and the charge was for us to go back and to reconsider which social-emotional indicator we wanted to use. So we have some difficulty in interpreting some parts of the CSCI, and so we're in the process of re-examining that. So, does that answer your question, Jeff?
Yeah, it's TBD, I guess, is what I'm hearing, right? Yeah. Thank you. Board committees, Board Education Committee chaired by Suzanne.
Oh, I almost forgot that was me now. So, the Education Committee met on Thursday, May 9th, here at West Campus. We were joined by Susan Millsk, Rebecca Jenkins, Jeff McHugh, and Mr. Simick. We reviewed the 2018-19 strategic plan and provided feedback, and that will be presented in the June meeting, so I'm not going to go into great detail on any of those pieces of the committee's work. We also, like, went through at lightning speed just a quick overview of the 2019-2020 strategic plan in its, I would say, most earliest information just jotted down and being considered. And then, once that is more fully developed, it'll be brought back, not only to the committee for our first meeting, but then also to the board for a deeper dive in, deeper review. And then, finally, we talked about grading and reporting practices. Susan Millsk explained that the district has begun the process of establishing common practice across DPM with regard to grading and reporting. The administrators briefly shared some basic tenants of standards-based grading with the committee. Susan shared that this spring, a small self-selected group of DPM teachers have been working under the leadership of Megan Eigenrauch, studying the issue through reading and reflecting on their own practice. And next, there will be an extension of that work toward looking at beliefs and practices and what's desired across the school, and this work will also involve looking at best practices and research, as well as looking to neighboring districts who have been doing similar work for their insights and experience. So stay tuned for more information on that front. One of the pieces of our meetings that we always have is, committee members are encouraged to bring forth questions for the administration to consider and come back to us and report on, and so that topic is one of the topics that we talked about. We also talked about professional development satisfaction and how that's measured here, so that may be a future topic of discussion, and social-emotional health of girls in grades 5 through 8, because there has been a consistent body of research. One of our committee members brought up about some of the challenges that girls faced during those years, and what do we know about it, and what are we seeing was sort of the question. So those are topics for future. Our next meeting will be determined at some point over the summer. We're actually, right now, in the process of determining the schedule for the Education Committee.
Committee members?
Committee members.
And we are looking for a community committee member, so if anyone is interested in joining the Education Committee, I believe the announcement just went out recently and is probably posted on all the school websites to get the information, to apply, to serve on that committee, so we would love to have one additional committee member. We have two who re-upped and are joining us for another term, which is fantastic, and we have space for one more.
Questions for Suzanne? Thank you, Suzanne. We move on to Board Finance and Operations chaired by Rob.
Finance and Operations has not met. We will meet next at 7:00 AM on Monday, June 17th, at West Campus. At that time, we will say goodbye, so it'll be the last meeting, for Tara Janos, Chris Byers, and sort of officially, Justin. And we are, Carl Lorenz is staying on as a community member, so we, too, will be looking for community members, which has been sent out by the same method that Suzanne just said.
Thanks, Rob. Any questions for Finance and Ops? Moving on to Policy chaired by Jeff.
The Policy Committee has not met since our last meeting. We are looking to have a joint Policy Committee meeting here shortly with District 115.
Fantastic. Questions regarding policy? Compensation Committee chaired by Jeff.
Compensation Committee has not met since our last meeting. I will be calling a meeting here shortly over the summer so that we can work on developing a charter and getting clarity as to what we're going to be working on going forward, and then we'll spend the next few months moving ahead.
Joint Shared Services Committee has not met, but will likely be meeting in the next month. We're on to Liaison Reports, NSSCD. Suzanne?
So, I am happy to report that so many things are going on at NSSCD that are awesome, that I'm just going to highlight a couple, and if you have any questions about my report or anything else, I'd be glad to answer those. One of the big pieces is that the draft three of the budget was presented to us at our last meeting and is now posted, and somehow, they have managed to be able to, through cuts and membership, a slight membership increase. membership increase, through a membership increase and through some tuition increases to be able to balance the budget, even though they had started with trying to make up for a, almost a million and a half dollars in potential deficit. So that's great news. Um, they've done a great job at that. And next year, they'll be working on the new financial model, as I've reported. Dr. Schneider reported that the systems assessment tool pilot has been completed with District 27, um, and they're going to revise the tool based on that experience. And then they hopefully will be able to make that available to other districts, which is a way that you can assess, um, what barriers might be existing in your district and the way that you're serving kids with special needs on a, on a grand scale. Also, he noted that the Illinois Assistive Technology Program has put NSSCD on their list of providers. And what that means is that, um, the use of it, the AAC, assistive technology evaluations are something that NSSCD can now provide, and that's a potential revenue source, which is also great news. This, this morning actually, and this evening she's speaking again, but this morning I was at the Gorton Center. Madeline Will was here speaking. She is a former Assistant Secretary of Education. And she was speaking about the history of, um, education and services for our population of people who have special needs and with disabilities, all the way up through workforce. It was an incredible hour. I have like five or six pages of notes from this morning that I haven't been able to fully process yet, but, um, she's just amazing. And one of the things that she said that was very impactful was that the work that's, one of the reasons that she came was that the work that's being done at NSSCD is, in her opinion, somewhat monumental. And the, um, potential that it has to impact practices here in Illinois where we are rated at the bottom of almost every list in terms of serving people with disabilities, um, is, there's a lot of potential there for us to have, for this area, um, starting with the leadership at NSSCD and the member districts, um, to really have an impact on how things happen in our state in a positive way. And then that could also have the potential to have a real national impact. So if you want to talk about national recognition, there's another way in which, um, we are moving towards something that, and she's been at this since the original law that is now IDEA was put in place. She was a part of one of the people who helped construct that piece of legislation. And, um, she's watched the entire history. And to hear her say that the work that's being done here is exactly on track, in her opinion, is huge. So I'm thrilled to have heard that today. Um, the other big thing was we had a strategic plan update. I sent it to everybody. Just tremendous amounts of work are being done towards the strategic plan there and incredible progress is being made. So any questions? I'm happy to speak to that.
Thanks Suzanne. Any questions for Suzanne regarding NSSCD? Moving on to legislative liaison, this role's been revamped and expanded a little bit. Uh, it includes the Illinois Association of School Boards, EdRed, and all other legislative matters that might affect our district. Alice is our new legislative liaison chair.
Thanks, Mike. Two points of interest, yesterday on Monday, May 20th, on a party line vote, the Illinois House of Revenue Committee sent the constitutional amendment to bring a graduated state income tax for Illinois to the full chamber for a vote. It will need 71 votes to be approved and place it on the November 2020 ballot for voters to consider whether they want it to pass or not. It's already passed the Senate. The goal behind it is to provide some property tax relief and provide, um, revenue in a different format. Somewhat related to that, another revenue driver in Illinois right now is, um, they're waiting on significant pieces of legislation to be filed relating to additional revenue being generated through gaming and recreational marijuana. Uh, if it passes, it will be a significant bump for education pre-K through 12, uh, in funding. Uh, just as a side note, um, those polled in Illinois have shown that 60% actually support cannabis legalization and 35% oppose it. So I'll give you a follow-up as soon as the vote's taken.
Thanks, Alice. Questions for Alice regarding legislative matters? Move on to Spirit of 67, our new liaison is Rich.
As a new Spirit of 67 liaison for the District 67 Board of Education, I have not had the pleasure to meet them yet, but I look forward to seeing them at their coffee on June 5th. Thank you.
We look forward to hearing more from you, Rich. Thank you. We'll spare you any questions. Executive APT Suzanne.
Uh, the executive APT has not met since I became their rep, so I anticipate my first, um, work with them is going to be in the fall. Well, they didn't invite me if they met.
Moving on, any other liaisons that we may have missed? We now come to our second public participation. Are there any members of the public who would now like to address the board? We now move to action items. Our first action item is the approval of the comptroller enabling agreement. May I have a motion to approve the comptroller enabling agreement as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments regarding the comptroller enabling agreement? Seeing none, we have a roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Chung? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up is the Director of Human Resources Enabling Agreement. May I have a motion to approve the Director of Human Resources Enabling Agreement as presented?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? And for our new members, Justin and, uh, Rich, if at any point you've got any questions or comments on any of this, feel free to ask. Uh, we take a, a motion and a second motion, which moves it to the floor basically, and then we can discuss it, and then we vote on it. That's the basic procedure. There were no comments or questions, so let's have a roll call, please, Eileen.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the textbook purchase in an amount not to exceed $10,000 per policy 2:20?
Aye.
So moved. A little ahead of myself. Premature on the vote.
A little ahead of myself there.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or questions regarding the textbook purchase?
Just to slow down Jeff here, he's already to vote. Rebecca, I think you, you probably want to, um, answer this. Um, I just have a question about how we are handling the transition to online textbooks. So for example, uh, I would never use an online textbook. And the reason is, if I choose an online textbook, the, the students will blame me when something goes wrong, and something will go wrong with an online textbook, uh, all the time. And their parents will blame me. And so, but that's at the college level. Here, we are picking a book that every teacher has to use, whoever teaches. And I want to know what we do when things go wrong, because they will go wrong. And so is Jordan expected to answer the parent questions, the student questions? Are the teachers expected to say, don't do that homework, it's okay, have an extra week? Because these publishers have updates all the time that don't really work seamlessly. And I just want to know how we handle that, especially K through 8. The students, I mean, my students are actually somewhat sophisticated to handle technological things. And so I'm just wondering what our processes are in place when we're looking for online materials that we're forcing all teachers to use and then the parents might get mad or stuff like that.
Are you speaking directly about this textbook adoption? Because this is not online only. This is, we are adopting actual hard books that stu, that each student will have in addition to an electronic resource.
Um, okay.
But I-
But my understanding is I have voted many times on giving our students one-to-one technology.
Yep.
I remember when my son was in DPM, he took whatever the heck that thing was called, Chromebook, to class, and he never took his actual textbook anywhere, right? Because this is a whole idea of having things online. And so when you show up in class, I would think you have your Chromebook and your online textbook, not the actual textbook.
It depends on the students, quite honestly, which is why, I mean-
But the, but point is, you could show up with just your Chromebook-
Absolutely.
And the online-
Yes.
And if by some chance, something's not working that day, what happens? Is there not learning that day? Is Jordan on call? I mean, I just want to know what happens when there is a glitch.
I think when there are glitches in that respect, we have technicians who are on, onsite, who can support if there's internet issues or glitches of that kind, our, our eye coaches help to support. So I would say-
What's an eye coach?
Uh, one of our tech coaches. So we have people onsite who support, I think, larger tech issues.
And, and teachers know all this. So like-
Yeah.
Teacher, 9:05 math starts and the math book's not working, by 9:08, everything's fixed because Jordan and his team is on it? Or math gets put on hold for that day?
I just want to say, um, between District 67 and District 115, it actually doesn't come up that often. Oops, sorry, jumping here. So between the two districts, the, um, the type of scenario you're describing really doesn't come across my desk too often where students are having trouble accessing resources. I can tell you District 115 is significantly more heavily invested in online curriculum and textbooks than District 67 is, just due to the nature of their courses, and it's rarely an issue. In terms of access to the internet, you know, one of the great things about shared service is we have redundant paths. So if Deer Path goes down, the high school is serving Deer Path. So that adds another layer of protection against these issues. Um, with a lot of the online textbooks, there is a cached version that gets saved to the device. So as you're going online and looking at your textbook, for at least the ones that I've worked with, um, and troubleshooted with some students with, there's a cached copy that's saved on your Chromebook. Um, so if the internet goes down, you still have access to it. So there's significant redundancy built in from a technical perspective.
Okay, I hope it works that cleanly. That's not my complete understanding of things by talking to people. Um, I hope teachers know where they can go for help, and I hope teachers aren't taking the blame when the administration is choosing online materials. That, I think that's a significant issue. And K through 8, the students are not that sophisticated. Um, high school, maybe you're right, maybe they actually know more or something. But I think this is, as a teacher myself, this is the thing I don't like about technology, is that when it glitches, then you lose a day of learning or two days of learning. And that's all I'm trying to make sure we're thinking about. So.
What is the grade level for this textbook, AATH?
It is, uh, eighth, in some cases, seventh. It's the, it's a high school level course. It's advanced algebra.
And do most teachers recommend that they bring the textbooks in, or will they have a choice to do that?
Students in the, in this particular class typically use, they want to use the textbook, but yes, they, they give the students the choice.
Understood, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the landscaping bid in the amount of $5,677 per month?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion regarding the landscaping bid? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, may I have a motion to approve the Deer Path Middle School furniture purchase in the amount of $78,931.50, including science tables at $49,801.50 and kidney-shaped tables at $29,130. Have a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion?
I'm going to slow us down again. Um, I have two questions. I understand in the memo, it said that the science tables are going to be useful now, they're going to be useful after we do the renovations. I don't know why we wouldn't just hold off and do them after the renovations. Is it that important to move in $50,000 worth of tables just so we can move them out to do the renovations? And are we really positive they're the tables we want? And the second question I would have is, um, for the other tables, we are told, here it says, uh, Deer Path Middle School, but on the memo, it says K through 4. And it says, um, reading rooms and core rooms are getting these tables. I'd like to know what tables are in there now.
Okay, first question first. Um, the first question related to Deer Path, the science tables. Every single possible rendition, um, that we had for any of the new construction, these tables work. There wasn't anything that we have dreamt of that we wouldn't use these type of tables. Um, last year before we had finished the design work, we had no idea what that may or may not look like, but every single rendition had some sort of tables that looked just like these. So we're confident they're going to work. You certainly could make them wait another year, or if, assuming that the board at a future date is going to approve the science labs, um, or if never, then pick them up at a later point. Um, I know they were pretty disappointed because I, they are in kind of old repair, um, or in need of repair, I, I should say. Um, so they are looking forward to using them, at least for the year while we wait and see what we do, or rebid, or decide, uh, going forward. So, um, I know they'd like to see them go forward. Um, the second one on the kidney-shaped tables, and if Renee was here, she could certainly answer this a lot better. When we did the original rollout of the classrooms, um, we focused on core classrooms, which primarily had to do with the, the desks, the chairs, um, some pieces of what you'd call soft seating or accessory seating, but not completely. Teachers had the option to choose which pieces they wanted in their classroom. So I, as a, let's say, a third grade teacher, maybe didn't want a kidney table, right? Which is what these things are. As Renee has gone out and done some professional development with the teachers on how better to utilize their classroom space to complement the teaching and learning, we've now had other teachers that have come forth and said, wow, I, I don't have a kidney table or something similar, I really see the benefit of having that. Can I get one now? Is it too late? So it is filling the remaining of-
So it's not replacing necessarily?
It's not replacing. It's not replacing anything new. So it's some of the people that didn't want them originally who now see the value. And the reading specialist spaces, we didn't buy anything for them in that, that first round. They too, on some of this professional development, now say, man, there's a real benefit to having this kind of workspace with students.
So the reading places might be getting rid of old tables?
Correct.
Okay. And the total ask is still under what we originally approved?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments regarding this action item? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the Cherokee insulation bid in the amount of $355,000.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Comments or discussion regarding the Cherokee insulation bid in the amount of $355,000? Jen, um, just for the public, you want to give 30 seconds on what this is, please?
Sure. We've been working, uh, at Cherokee Elementary with an excessive humidity and condensation issue. We've tried multiple attempts to solve this problem. Um, still has not been solved. We've been doing it more piecemeal. This is a kind of a comprehensive going in and re-insulate all of the piping above the ceilings, which would, uh, take a, a good part of the chunk of the summer to do, which hopefully will solve that issue. summer to do, which hopefully will solve that issue. We will come back to the board also with a recommendation to change out some of our controls on our air handling units and rebalance the system, which is rebalancing the air, the airflow, and the humidity by zone within the building. So making an attempt to solve this issue.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Roll call, vote please, Eileen.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve Perkins &amp; Will Science Lab renovation repackaging proposal in the amount of $51,260?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion?
Okay. So I don't understand what we're voting on. After our previous discussion, it sounds to me like from there, we have different ideas about the science labs, and I don't know if we actually need to approve all of this. Like, don't we just need to approve the lower-numbered respec thing?
Correct. They outlined two options in there. We're making a recommendation for the second version of that, which is the repackaging. So it includes $13,500 to make some minor design tweaks and put the package back together, $94,40 to rebid that, and then it's $28,320, which is from the last contract that you never spent. So it's just repackaged with this. The new money that's being approved is really the $13,5 and the $94,40.
And that doesn't change from what we discussed over there today?
No.
Are they repackaging... So the last project that we looked at was the approximately 3.8 million. Are they repackaging a different project?
No, they're going to take a large component of that previous project. They're going to make some tweaks to the 5, 6 side that we talked about with the windows and the wall, and also some of the prep centers. So there's going to be new design work for that area. And then they'll re-prepare those bid packages, send them out, and then we're kind of right back on the if we approve to move forward piece. If we, at that point, don't move forward, the $28,320 wouldn't be spent, just like it wasn't on the last contract.
So they're not repackaging the project to lose the essence. We talked about some of the value engineering would lose the essence of the project. They're not going down that road.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Said another way, they're not rebidding the $300,000 to $400,000 savings approach?
Correct. There's going to be a small, minor piece of that, which is part of the small redesign, but it is not the full $300 or $400 possible value engineered amount. That was the first part of this option. If you chose to go down that, that would be the redesign at $60,000.
$60,000?
Forty-sixteen. Yes.
So we're basically paying a little over $20,000 to lower the total cost by about $200,000 because of that wall that we can't move and things like that?
I don't think I have an exact number on what that will be, but we'll be lowering it by some portion, yes.
They won't lower it by $400,000, because that was-
No, because that was all the value engineering pieces. This is one piece of it.
Other comments or discussion on this? Roll call, vote please, Eileen.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Sorry, I didn't hear you, Dr. Lemke.[1221.01][1221.01](Laughter)
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.[1238.33][1238.33](Laughter)
Please note my tone.
You said "nye." I'm not sure whether that's "aye" or "nee."
Said "aye."[1246.21][1246.21](Laughter) Motion carries unanimously with enthusiasm. May I have a motion to approve the Whipple Consulting one-year contract in the amount of $104,845 for District 67, as amended in executive session?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion regarding the Whipple Consulting one-year contract?
Just one brief comment. This wasn't amended in executive session. It was amended in workshop.
You are correct. Thank you.
Also, just quickly, Mike, and one thing you provided for us in terms of the specs of the position, it does say starting July 1st, and Ann's contract runs through July 1st. So I thought you said earlier in workshop that whoever we hire would come like a month early. There would be overlap. Did I just get something wrong? Is that still the intention?
Next year.
Next year, yeah. But it says in the specifications for what we're hiring for, we would extend an offer around April 1st to start July 1st, and I think that would be Ann's first day of retirement.
I thought it said to begin on May 1st, if I'm not mistaken, but I don't have that...
I have it.
Do you have it?
It says starting date July 1st. It's the fourth bullet point from the top. But that's okay. Your intention is to have them start around May 1st.
Correct. Yes, my intention is to ensure an overlap period.
Other comments or questions regarding the Whipple Consulting contract?
Yes. Just in looking at the actual verbiage, the agreement amount for compensation talks about 12 monthly installments from July 2019 through July 2020. That's actually 13 installments. So either it's through June, which would be the end of the fiscal year, or you need to change 12 to 13.
You are correct. So I will suggest that we amend the contract to get the months-
Although it does say it's July 15th through June. So it's mid to mid. Okay. So it's not starting July 1. So it's not in complete alignment with fiscal year.
So there may be a payment, actually, in both Julies?
There will be, yeah.
There will be. So, okay. Good. Good clarification. Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Roll call, vote please, Eileen.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, may I have a motion to approve the district consolidation plan?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Mike, can you give 30 seconds background on this for the public?
Yeah, so this is a change in the... So No Child Left Behind was reauthorized as the Every Student Succeeds Act. So NCLB became ESSA, which is the acronym SOUP we live in in education. And one of the changes in the reauthorization of ESSA was that the board, instead of the administration sending this forward, each school board has to approve the title plan. So Title 1 through 4, and then an IDEA flow-through and preschool grant. So this is a formality that was not required in the previous act.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
My only comment is, in reading this, if anyone wants to know what kind of work is happening across the district, get your good readers, and then take a look at this document, because there is a lot of amazing stuff that is put into this document. You will have to magnify it tremendously. I think it might be like a three font or something. But it's really a great representative. I'm impressed with... It's just such a... It's a nice summary of a lot of the work that's going on across the district. So kudos to those of you who put it together, I believe, maybe the back row.
Thank you for that. Other comments or discussion? Roll call, vote please, Eileen.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the ECRAT contract renewal through June 2020 in the amount of $38,524?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion regarding the ECRAT renewal? Roll call, vote please, Eileen.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the contract for classroom AV upgrades in the amount of $55,500?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion regarding the AV upgrades?
Does this affect all the schools in the district? For the record.
Yes. All buildings have some classrooms getting upgrades here. This is an extension on work we did at the start of the year. Last year, his big construction project, we got to a number of our rooms, our core classrooms, that we were upgrading, that we were upgrading with lights and a whole bunch of lights, furniture, and other upgrades for the classroom. One of those was AV upgrades. There were some classrooms that didn't make the list last year because they were added on after I had done my spec-ing, so this is just cleanup for the project we've already done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jordan. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, vote please, Eileen.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda, and the item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. I'll now read the items on the consent agenda. Approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements dated April 2019. Minutes of a regular meeting in workshop dated April 23, 2019. Minutes of an executive session, April 23, 2019. Minutes of a special meeting, old board, new board, April 30, 2019. Minutes of an executive session, April 30, 2019. Disposal of audio recordings, August 22, 2017. Would any board member like any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments, discussion regarding the consent agenda? Roll call, vote please, Eileen.
Mr. Chung?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Engeland?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. FOIA requests. We had one FOIA request this past month from Arnold &amp; Cadjan Commercial, status complete. Announcements, Friday, May 24th, half-day of student attendance. Monday, May 27th, it's Memorial Day, no school. Tuesday, May 28th, 8th grade graduation, 5:00 p.m. at West Campus. Friday, June 7th, last day for student attendance, half-day for students. And Tuesday, June 25th, our next Board of Education meeting, 7:00 p.m. right here in the West Campus Boardroom. May I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest School District 67 Board meeting?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.